Okay, I think everybody's here, so I'm going to call the March 26th meeting of the Concord Select Board Order. We have a short agenda, as you might imagine, and the first item on the agenda is an update from the Town Manager. Stephen?
Hi. Sorry about that. Good evening. So, basically, we've been monitoring the number of cases here locally and statewide. I don't have the most recent numbers. In fact, the state announces their numbers, I think, right about now each day. You know, the increases in the numbers are obviously alarming. You know, since the last time we met, there's been a lot of changes from a public policy standpoint, both at the federal, state, and local level. There's been restrictions on construction. The governor has basically closed non-essential businesses. And the federal government has, I think, enhanced travel restrictions, and so there's been a lot of changes locally. I think we have reported our first case, confirmed case. And like I said, we are seeing an increase in testing. We have been in close communication. Either department heads or other managers of town departments have been in close communication with our institutional partners, Houses of Worship, MCI Concord. To make sure that we're staying on top of their situations, Emerson Hospital, of course, we actually have tapped a local resident who is a retired physician from Emerson to be a liaison between the town and the hospital to make sure that we can be as great of assistance to them as possible.
That's Alan Woodward, correct?
Yes, Dr. Woodward, yep. And like I said, just trying to plan for what we expect to be a surge in cases. I think all communities are expecting a surge, and so we're trying to plan for that as well.
Do you have any questions? Any members of the board have questions for the Town Manager?
I do. This is Linda. I'm wondering, Stephen, if you've heard from either Minuteman Arc or Public Housing in terms of any issues they might have?
I know Minuteman Arc suspended operations a couple of weeks ago. I think right around the time the town closed offices to the public. They also suspended operations. I have not heard from the Concord Housing Authority. But that doesn't mean that they haven't reached out to police, fire, public help, and I'm just not aware of it. But nothing that has risen to the level of, you know, SMT discussion for, you know, some kind of crisis intervention. I should have also mentioned in my update that the governor did announce that schools would remain closed till at least May 4th.
I will say that I didn't run into, we kept our social distance, Jean Goldsberry this afternoon when we were out on our mutual constitutionals. So he's present and accounted for.
And if I remember incorrectly, Stephen, that you'll be doing another robocall this evening?
Yes, in fact, I've been working on the script and the highlights. I just spoiler alerted the highlights. But if the board does vote to postpone the annual election, we're going to put the call out as soon as this meeting is over to announce that to the community. We'll also let the community know that the moderator is preparing to make an announcement on the scheduling of town meeting and a likely postponement there. And also put in, you know, the information about the schools being closed, the ban on reusable bags from the state, which kind of got out ahead of us a little bit. And some of the other bits of information. And then also remind the community that one thing that's really been positive in all of this is the level of neighborhood support for each other. There's been a lot of people really stepped up to help their neighbors. Like I said, we've been talking to, we met with a group of people from representing Houses of Worship and, you know, asked them to, you know, let us know if there's anything we can do to support their efforts. But, you know, getting them to kind of coordinate and come up with ways to help manage this. One of the things that we've talked, we started talking about is, you know, managing the anxiety of it all. And, you know, how is this impacting people? One of the reasons I was a bit late was we were finishing up our we have a daily briefing with our emergency operations center team, police chief, fire chief, deputy town manager, CPW, and CMLP. And just talking about even impacts on employees. I mean, everyone, you know, our employees have been really phenomenal in how they have handled this. They've been extremely productive working from home. You know, we've been as supportive as we can be when situations come up that have been identified that need a little extra support. But by and large, level of commitment to their jobs, to their departments, and to the people of Concord has been really amazing. But when you're used to being in the same space with the same people every single day, and you're kind of going through the action parts of it, but not getting that human interaction, it does eventually, you know, it does, I think, change your perspective and your attitude a little bit. So we're trying to think of ways to be proactive about maintaining staff morale and really rewarding them for how great they've been in this situation, especially since we know we're going to be we're going to be in this for at least another month. And, you know, people are, people are seen to be managing fine now. You know, we don't want to have it happen and start really have people start losing perspective before we've thought about, you know, having a conversation about how you're doing? How can we do, how can we work together to handle this better and really still stick together as a team?
All right, thank you, Stephen. And I know on behalf of all of us, you'll you'll thank all of our employees who are working so hard to keep us all safe and town services to be continuing. So I hope you will do that on our behalf.
Sure.
Can I ask one question? Stephen, how are the employees of Emerson Hospital being? I realize that's not all, that's not under your direct administration. But, you know, they're people that care for all of us, and I worry about both the employees and all of the things that they're being asked to take on.
Yeah, so one of the things that's come up obviously is childcare. And we are working collaboratively with other childcare providers on seeing what we can do to help with that need. The town has spaces that aren't being used that could be employed for something like that. It's, there's licensing and there's kind of a liability issue, so it's not he's turning on the lights and, you know, dumping a pile of Legos in the middle of the floor. It's complicated to get something like that established. But Emerson has approached us with it as a need, and we are trying hard to figure that out. They did share with us, I'm sure you all saw it. Many hospitals have put out the same kind of social message where it's all medical professionals in their gear holding signs that say, "We come to work for you, stay home for us." And that message should really resonate with everyone. That's, you know, social distancing and hygiene best practices are number one and number two for trying to stop the spread of the virus. And I think, you know, I'm sure we all watch the news every day. The more we learn about it, the more we realize the places that aren't taking that seriously are seeing much higher levels of increase in the spread than the places that really try to be aggressive and stay ahead of it.
Thanks.
Recently, Louisiana.
Right.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much, Stephen. The next item on our agenda is in fact the postponement of the town election, which was scheduled for next week, March 31st. As you probably know, a bill was submitted by the governor and was passed by the legislature to grant the select boards the authority to postpone town elections. You know, I sent you earlier today a motion to that effect, and I know both Mina and Christina are on the line here as well as Carrie. So if any of you would like to weigh in with your perspective on this before we move on with this, I'd
Mike, I can weigh in briefly. This is Mina. The ability to postpone the elections, as we talked about last time, required either legislation or a court order. Luckily, the legislator sprang into action before we would have gone to court, which would have been Tuesday. So there is a bill that did effectively what we thought it would. There is some odd language in it that we've talked about with Mike and Stephen that is a little bit inconsistent, we think, with what the intent was, which was to just postpone and figure out the date later. It suggests that you need a date certain, at least that's what it says on its face. It's not, we understand what the Secretary of State intended to do, but it's what it ended up saying. So for that reason, the motion set a date in the future. The, at the end of the day, it might not matter one way or another, because what you would have had to do after postponing anyway is to consult with the clerk and those who were, the town manager's office, those who would basically run the logistics for town elections and come up with a date. And we have found actually that the towns that so far we're dealing with, that have been, have used this to postpone elections, have all picked a date in June anyway. So far enough out. We've also talked to the moderator about the effect this has on there's an interplay between the charter and and the when public officials' positions expire in Concord and when the town election is. Because they're sort of in a reverse order than usual here, where you have the town election first, excuse me, later as opposed to first. It actually still works out the same way. The folks in office now, their terms go through this year's town meeting just like they would before the election happens. And, you know, to the extent that they have anything to do with town meetings, their positions will go through next year's town meeting anyway. So it shouldn't make a whole lot of difference on timing. But the more important thing is just making sure that Carrie has enough time to do what she needs to do, and her staff has the time to do what they need to do to put on an election. And I know she's given some thought to that in the last 48 hours.
Mina and I had discussed this along with Christina, who provided some edits to the motion. And we had landed on a May 26th date, but Carrie, you might tell us the work that you did to sort of guide us to a different date.
Yes, we were looking at the, we were looking at June because it's far enough out away from this pandemic, hopefully, to allow for active participation from those who wish to. And also, we were looking at a date that didn't interfere with Memorial Day weekend as far as the 10-day prior voter registration deadline or also setting up the polls. May 26th does fall on the day after Memorial Day, so that could get a little complicated. We also checked with Community Center and Hunt Gym to see if, you know, what kinds of conflicts they have. Because that time of year in particular with picnics and things like that, we didn't want to interfere. So Thursday actually ends up being a better day than Tuesday in June.
And that's the June 11th date that you proposed?
Yes, yes.
All right. Do any members of the board want to ask questions or weigh in with an opinion here? All right, then. Yes, Linda?
So you just said June 4th?
June 11th.
June 11th.
June 11th, okay. And what are, what are we thinking about in terms of the town meeting right now, if we heard anything about that?
Carmen is more than likely to announce a postponement of town meeting, but she has not done so yet. But her intent is to do that, and she wants to get as close to town meeting as she can. So with the 30-day window that she has, she doesn't wind up having to postpone it yet again. So I communicated with her earlier today, and it's her intent to do that. And she'll probably make an announcement of her intent next week, but the actual date, she's going to wait as long as she can to pick a date.
If I can just build on top of that, she did send, she did send us a statement that I intend to incorporate into the call, the all-call tonight with basically what Mike just said. So the community will have some notice that it's most likely going to be postponed, but an announcement will be made later because of this 30-day requirement. But I think that decision, like this decision, there may need to be additional postponements. We just don't know. I wish we knew.
All right, thank you.
If I could just, sorry, if I could just add, as far as the mechanics of a postponed election, the ballots that have already been printed and the many absentee voters who have already filled out ballots, the legislation enables us to use these same ballots. So the ballots would still indicate March 31st. The candidates are already in place. The ballots are printed. We'll print additional absentee ballots so that we have enough for folks who may want to vote by absentee ballot. There's also an additional option of voting by early ballot, and we'll have both of those applications available online and the ability to mail them out to people.
Carrie, when you have got the logistics of this all nailed down, you'll get something up on the town website that indicates process and procedures people should use if they want to take advantage of absentee or early voting?
Absolutely.
That'd be just terrific. Any other comments?
Yes, I think I know the answer, but just in case. So if someone has already voted by absentee ballot, that vote counts and they don't vote again, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and my other question, which I also think I know, but I'm not totally sure. The legislation only lets us move the town meeting up by 30 days at a time. So right now Carmen would be able to move it up 30 days, and then if we have to move it up another 30 or however many days, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. That's actually unchanged from current state law.
Right, okay.
What the expansion will be with, that legislation is still making its way through. If it passes in the current form, what it might do is allow it to go past June 30th as well.
Right, so we don't know if the town meeting will be before or after the election. We just have to play it by ear and see how it falls out for now.
Yes, I guess that's right at the moment, yep.
As of today, that's correct. Jane, your audio is not working, Jane.
You're muted.
I think you muted your sound.
Okay, is this better?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. My question about the process would be, you know, after the vote today, I assume that the other pre-election local processes, whether it's the League of Women Voters forum or any of the other candidate endeavors to move that forward, how does that get communicated?
As far as how, how do candidates know? I've been in touch with candidates to let them know, so.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So the motion has the May 26th date, but Carrie has brought up a June 11th date, but the motion that we have before is for May 26th.
That is the date we're going to use on the motion, is June 11th. I distributed this before I had received a communication from Carrie.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I forwarded to Mina to make sure there was no legal issue that I was not aware of, and he responded there wasn't. So June 11th it is.
Okay, thank you.
So there are no additional comments. Linda, if I could ask you to read the motion?
Move that the Select Board pursuant to Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, Section 1, Paragraph A, signed by the Governor on March 23rd, 2020, hereby postpones the town of Concord local elections scheduled for March 31, 2020 to June 11, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Under which call roll?
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Ochkus?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Linda Ascavado, myself, aye.
Thank you. I note that it is unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a decision regarding the use of plastic bags. Mr. Town Manager?
Well, when we put this on the agenda and started drafting an order to to prohibit the use of reusable bags, basically allowing the use of single-use plastic bags once again in local stores, we had heard concerns from other communities that, you know, the virus does live on surfaces and that there was concerns about exposure to grocery workers and customers alike through the exchange of reusable bags. I think the city of Cambridge, in fact, was an early adopter of one of these bans. And then at the, I think at the press conference yesterday, the governor announced an executive order banning the use of reusable bags. So it somewhat mitigates the need to do this. If we wanted to adopt it locally for our own purposes, anyway, we could, but there's now a statewide ban in effect.
And what about the allowance for the use of plastic bags?
I think that that's a part of the governor's, I think the governor's order includes, and not only, the governor's order does include the use of plastic bags and I think prohibits the charging for the use of plastic bags.
So subsequently then, this motion, and we really don't need to act on it?
No, like I said, it was, we put it on, I think, because we thought this was going to be a growing concern, and clearly it was, because the governor took action before, you know, yesterday, I said yesterday afternoon. While, while we're on this item though, I do want to just, I, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention this in my Town Manager's update, but I don't have really much specific to report on, but I know that, you know, people are concerned about our local businesses and our local economy. And I just want to let people know that Mike and I, we're in a, we're in a meeting today with some of our internal folks, our tourism coordinator and our public information officer and others, to have a conversation about what can we do that, I'll be candid, there really is not a lot that the town can do as we sit here now to support local businesses. Because it's, I don't see a way to promote businesses that comports with the guidance for social distancing and really staying at home, as the governor had announced. One of the things we are working on is developing a list of businesses that meet the definition of essential in accordance with the governor's order. We are going to be following the governor's order on the closing of non-essential businesses. And it's pretty specific in what he defines as essential, and like I said, we'll be using that definition locally as well. So what we're trying to do is put together a list of essential businesses and any special hours they may have, either reduced hours from normal operations or special hours for, say, for example, seniors to shop kind of on their own. I don't, I expect it to be posted to the website soon. I can't, we just started working on this this afternoon, this morning. So I just want to let the community know that we are trying to pull together some information that will be helpful to them so they know where they can go and, you know, hopefully still try and support the businesses that are remaining open. We are also starting a dialogue with, we're going to start a dialogue with the business community about how we can, you know, bounce strong once we're back in business. So I just, like I said, I wish I had more to give you right now in terms of a specific set of actions that we're taking to support businesses besides referring them to information that's out there from the SBA and the Commonwealth or tax relief and things like that. That's pretty much all we have. I know town, I know the town departments that are still working on site are going out, getting lunch delivered as often as they can from the different restaurants. But we're really looking ahead to when this, when this is over, how do we come out of this really, you know, come out of the gate really strong? So I just wanted to let you know that that's, we are talking about it and thinking about it.
Stephen, go ahead, Jane.
I was going to say, somewhat jokingly, I can promise a lot of the local restaurants that many of the families in Concord will be very sick of their own cooking. And so I'm sure that there won't be lack of, there'll probably be lines, but that doesn't help anybody now, and I appreciate that. I did want to voice my concern about a rush to using plastic bags in supermarkets versus paper bags. I appreciate the importance of not bringing your own reusable bags because obviously then you could be potentially bringing your own viruses in. But everything I've read from the CDC and other sites would indicate that the virus lasts longer on plastic than it does on paper. So I'm not sure that going from reusable bags to plastic bags versus reusable bags to paper bags is a better choice.
I don't know if it mandates plastic bags. I think it just says you can't have reusable ones, and it allows plastic bags. I think each retailer is going to stock whatever their preference is.
And that's why I'm encouraging the preference of paper.
There is some question of availability of paper bags too, but I think Stephen is right. Also, I would say on the business side, I'm going to be on a call tomorrow with some of the business leaders in town. And I did get a list today of the area businesses that are open. Stephen, I would suggest that while we're verifying the information on that list, we might as well get the list up and posted. There's a lot of useful information on websites to the various businesses that can be checked on while we're verifying ours. So I would, I would hope that we could go ahead and get that list up before the verification.
There's some notes, whoever, I think it was a library, a library employee that compiled this. There's some editorial notes that I want to make sure we clean up before we post. But yeah, we'll get it up, we'll get it up as soon as humanly possible. We know people need that information.
Well, I have a question about that. Will it include, it'll just be businesses that are open, or will it include storefronts that are closed, but you can order online from them?
It'll, it'll just be essential businesses in accordance with the governor's order.
Okay, thank you.
And it will not just be Concord essential businesses, but it will be grocery stores in a little bit broader areas than just the town.
Yeah, currently, and like I said, it needs to be some verification. But it'll be as best as we can approximate. We can't certify that it's all, it'll all, because businesses may change as they go. But it'll be accurate as of the time of posting. But, you know, do they deliver? Is it curbside, takeout, you know? Like I said, special hours for grocery stores, and we'll get, like I said, we'll get up there as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, there is another item that we're not ready to talk about tonight. But I suspect it will be on our agenda sometime very soon, and that is another piece of legislation that allows the town, the Select Board, to waive all penalties and fees with late property tax payments. And so I suspect that along with, it also allows the Select Board to forego local option meal and hotel motel charges. So I think motel and meal taxes are probably down pretty considerably, but we might be considering in the future waiving all penalties and late fees for property tax. So that's just a head up. There's nothing to do now, but that's likely to come before us in the foreseeable future.
Yeah, I think just to build on it, just to, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of throwing this off kind of scattershot. I'm trying to prioritize the information that we give out. But we are also having a conversation internally with the chief financial officer about, in the context of the thing Mike just mentioned, I think when we do, when the board does talk about it, we hope to have kind of a revenues analysis update. we hope to have kind of a revenues analysis update, both from a historical, I mean, there's no, I, I made the comment to someone the other day, like, let's look at what, let's look at what people did the last time this happened and do that. And of course, there wasn't a last time, which is what makes this all, which drives a lot of the uncertainty. But we could go back to 2008, which was probably the, the, probably the closest economic comparable and look at what happened to property values and revenues and things like that. The other thing is, I think, I think most of the hotels have announced that they're closed. And, you know, the, a lot of the restaurants have in fact closed, some are open, some are not. We do generate lodging and meals taxes and things like that. And so I think we want to look at what are those revenues doing for FY '20? For the FY '20 budget that we're in now? What's the impact there? And then do we anticipate, you know, additional issues for the FY '21 budget that's, you know, in the warrant as we speak? So we are, I, again, I don't have answers, I just want to give the board, you know, the information that we are, we're working on that too.
Right, thank you. Yes.
Yes, Stephen, I think that would be really helpful when we do talk about that, to have that revenue analysis, that'd be great. Whatever, whatever we can have. And question from Mike, any idea when we might be meeting again?
At this time, I don't. I think I want to review the items that were on our agenda and consult the town manager to make sure there's nothing that we really have to get done here. And if there is, we'll meet. And then I suspect we'll be meeting as events sort of unfold as it was with this postponement of the election on a needed basis. If any of you have suggestions or specifics that you want dealt with, I hope you'll be directly in touch with me so, so we can get this planned.
And, and, okay, and one more question I have is, some people are extraordinarily busy during these times, like with their kids at home and they're, or they're trying to work remotely or whatever. And other people are start crazy with nothing to do. And so what I want to ask is, for, for those of us who have some spare time on our hands, is there anything that we can help with? Stephen and Mike and any, what can we do? You know, if you need extra clerical work or phone calls or just delegate it to us and we'll help, well, I'll, I'll help.
I, I appreciate that, you're right. The essential operations of the town are still going along pretty well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff that we're really not doing. But there's really nowhere to, like the, the normal work, you know, there's nowhere to put it. You know, there's, nobody is doing normal work right now. I will say, I, I've, I've been in contact with area managers and most of their Select Boards are meeting on, on an on-demand basis. As I think, like, like you all, usually tied to acts of the legislature or the governor. Usually when the governor or legislature does something that, that has a local impact, then we get, then we would get together to either take a vote like we did tonight or discuss it or something. I think, Terry, the biggest, you know, like I said before, the biggest thing people can do is stay home just to mirror the, the message of the governor. And, you know, if, you know, call, check in on your neighbors by, by phone. And, and I encourage everybody to do that. Like, I think I told the board, we don't, the town doesn't really have the capacity right now to help coordinate or manage volunteer efforts. That's why we're really trying to get the word out to neighborhood groups that, you know, if they do need something specific, we can try and help them the best we can. But in terms of like coordinating message boards and things like that on the town website, we just, we don't have the capacity to do that. But we hope, we really encourage people to do those types of things. And, and that's really the big thing is if, if there's a group that's in your neighborhood working, support them. If a part of, you're a part of a club or an association that wants to do something while maintaining social distancing guidelines, you know, do it that way. Or, I don't know, a new hobby, a new, a new craft skill or something, a new hobby? Play, play guitar? Something like that.
Well, to that end, I, I did want to throw a shout out to all of the folks that I've seen online and other social media groups who are making masks. Because that has become a, a truly a cottage industry in, in Concord, as far as I can tell. I know I have some neighbors who've cracked out their 3D printer and done an incredible job at building face shields. But every time I open up my laptop, I see more evidence of incredibly inspiring efforts to help the healthcare workers.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I'm at Concord Green and as you know, there are 220 units there. And the management office has launched an effort to help res, do that pairing up. And they've gotten a great response from volunteers who are willing to, you know, run errands, get groceries, whatever, that people who aren't able to get out need. So it's a good model, but not sure it's, there are that many communities in town that it would apply to. But the spirit is there.
All right, thank you. Well, Carrie, Mina, Christina and Chris, thank you for joining us. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.